Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the East Long Meadow Town Council meeting of June 25th, 2024. I would ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask that we take a moment of silence to reflect on all that's happening, both near and far. Thank you. In accordance with mass general law, I have to announce that we are audio and video recording this meeting by Elcat, and I would ask if anyone in the audience is audio or video recording. Seeing no one in the audience, I'm assuming no. Moving on, public comments. There's no one in the audience. Don, is there anyone online? That would like to make a public comment?
I don't see anybody who wants to make a public comment.
Okay, we'll move on. Council comments. Council. Any, any comments? Connor?
I just wanted to say thanks to Matt for the last two years that he served and wish him well. Hope him forward.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. And with that, I would also like to reach out and say welcome aboard to Jim. He was the other nominee recipient. So I believe at our July meeting, we will have him right over here. Welcome aboard, Jim. Town manager report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy summer. So schools out and John Jane Brothers wasted no time getting onto the the campus of the high school to start their enabling work. I was actually just talking to Don before the meeting. Apparently, the clearing in the back, the tree removal is quite substantial. I haven't been around back yet. I'm sure you've seen the work out front. So I think a lot of their schedule and timeline and stuff is on the website. So if you're planning it to the high school, make sure you, wherever you're headed is open and or not under construction. But that all that stuff, the schedule and stuff is all on the website. And we'll have a 60% submission to the Mass School Building Authority for late July is the vote like the 25th or the 26th. So I guess I'll echo some council comments. Congratulations to Council O'Shea on being reelected and Jim. And Sarah Trullio also for being reelected to school committee. And I'll take a minute to, to wish a fond farewell to Matt as well. Really appreciate everything you brought to the council in my first year. So I won't use the, you want me to use it? You want me to? So he brought a certain je ne sais quoi to the, to the, to the town council and obviously best of luck with everything. I'm sure we'll see around. I'll be hounding you for some border committee at some point.
That's right.
But best of luck.
Thank you.
Public Library had their kickoff, summer reading kickoff extravaganza. We missed because we were here two Tuesdays ago on the 11th. Obviously, very well attended, prizes, face painting, magic, all sorts of, you know. So thanks to the library staff. If they're ever having an event, they're, they, they already have a reputation. They know how to throw a party. So feel free to get over to the library. Pine Knoll started this week. I've had, Donna's really excited. They are packed to the gills. It's one of the one of, one of the more popular camps around. And, and they always do a great job up there. Their, their, the pool is also open to the public and it's quite lovely up there. I don't know if anybody's been up there in a while, but the hidden jewel at the edge of town, I've, I've been calling it. Might be time to check out Pine Knoll if you haven't been up there in a bit. We, we are, HR Director search is underway. We had interviews last week. Three excellent candidates, three excellent interviews. So much so where we're almost forced to do a second round of interviews. So, which is not a terrible thing, other than, you know, everyone having to deal with the interim HR director. But Mariola has obviously been, and Megan have been doing a great job. We also, Mary Muzzy, who is the HR Generalist, resigned a couple of weeks ago. So that department of four is now down to two. So they're obviously very capable and, and doing a great job, but have a little patience with, with, with your HR questions until we get this position filled. I think I've mentioned before, it was announced official last week, we received a Mass Trails Grant for feasibility study for extending the rail trail north of Maple Street all the way to Westwood, which is actually pretty well traversed right now. Through the, but it's, you know, obviously not finished. It's under just the rail bed that people are walking on. But so thanks to the DPW for putting that together, Bruce and Mark Berman. So we're working with VHB on that. We should have something this fall to hopefully turn into another grant opportunity for construction. So we've got the beginning of the fiscal year. Obviously, there's a lot of board committee commission, including council, where, where where, what am I trying to say? Yeah, the, the, everybody's terms have sort of run out at the end of the year here. So I think we did 25 or 30 appointments or reappointments. I have the list of four here that I was asking if it was your pleasure to sort of waive that portion of the charter that gives you the 45 days to sort of look at certain reappointments to certain bodies. And those appointments are Russell Denver for Planning Board, his experience, and well, all four really, their experience speaks for themselves. Katie Jobins, Board of Health, Marilyn Gudini, Board of Assessors, and Nancy O'Connor for the Board of Library Trustees. Again, all four of them have stellar records and we're thrilled that they're still excited to be part of their respective boards. I also want to, I have kind of a humanitarian update that I, I need to share that didn't make it to print. Last Friday night, during the weather, an independent living facility in Agawam was struck by lightning and caught fire. It quickly became a sort of an evacuation event. And Easton Meadow provided some mutual aid, Long Meadow, West Springfield, Westfield. It became a regional thing. But the, the ownership group of that quail-run facility in Agawam also owns Bluebird here in Easton Meadow. So they, they, at that evening, they got them to a nearby hotel for sort of a temporary fix and then brought them all to Bluebird on, starting on Sunday. So I just want to take a moment to just recognize some folks that facilitated, facilitated this process, all, you know, volunteers. You know, Chief Morissette and Chris Beecher, obviously weren't on duty. They were there all weekend. We had a, one of our van drivers from COA, Jeff Chappell, drove one of our vans to Agawam and was bringing residents to the hotels the first night. Aaron Koblur, Carleen Renaud, Joe Baker, and Jerry Reader, Reader from CEO Council on Aging. The Health Department, Tammy was, was there most of the weekend. And some of our CERT members, Phil Chapman and Owen Johnston, doing everything from, basically whatever they could do to care for these folks. When they came over to, to Bluebird, a lot of the rooms that they had available were not clean. These, these people were scrubbing toilets and washing floors to, 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 to make the space habitable. So there was also some help from Long Meadow Shelter Team, Andy Fraser and Donna and Craig Goudreau. Like I said, Paul Morissette, Chris Beecher, Agawam Fire Chief Alan Saroyes, Mayor Johnson of Agawam. Senator Velas was on scene on Sunday with us as we, as we talked to their sort of corporate office to get this plan together a little bit better. And Pat Carnavali and Don Brantley from MEMA, Director and Deputy Director of MEMA. You know, like I said, we all have jobs to do, but when things happen and you, and you recognize the character of the people in this community and surrounding communities to, to help their fellow human beings. I just wanted to make, take a moment to recognize all those people who, who gave up a large chunk of their weekend to help out others. So thanks to all them. And I just, again, that's, that, that kind of thing makes me happy to be part of, of an organization in a community like this.
A question.
Were you there?
Oh, I don't live there, no.
No, no, no.
I was at, I was at Bluebird on Sunday. We had a sort of a
Well, then you deserve our thanks.
Oh, well, I, I, yeah, I, I spent a couple hours there, but it was small in comparison to what, what these volunteers did.
Teamwork.
But yes, thank you. We, we, we all do what we can to, especially in a situation like that one. It was, there was an extra 48 people from that facility brought over to Bluebird.
Wow.
It was, it was pretty chaotic and without the help of our volunteers and it would have been a lot worse.
I can't imagine that they had 48 rooms available. People in different places.
There was, right, there was some doubling up and, you know, our response was a little bit better than the original response from the ownership group. We were bringing cots and air mattresses and sheets and helping people get their stuff out of there. I mean, this is a, this isn't an assisted living facility. This is independent. So everybody has their, they got cats and dogs and they're, 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 they're in their own space and they didn't have their own stuff for, they just, there was a fire, they grabbed what they could and, you know, everybody tried their best to, to, to make the situation better for them. At this point, after our meeting on Sunday, there's been a huge swell in, in support. And everyone's got a bed, everyone's got a room, safe bed. You know, our, 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 our on-duty firemen and women were, were there quite a few times because of medical calls and, and, you know, the stress of the situation itself was, so anyway, I just want to, again, say thanks to everybody and, and thanks to everyone in Agawam who, who, I'm sure I forgot a bunch of people in Agawam, but, you know, it, it was a, it was a regional effort and it was very well done.
Will they, these folks be displaced for a fair amount of time?
So original sort of estimate on, on the building being back up and running, six months. So I would assume they'll be, if not placed in Bluebird, if that works sort of geog- geographically for, for families. But yeah, it, it was, a lot of the building was damaged and they're trying their best to get portions of it that they can back open to get people back in their space. But it's just, it was a, it's a tough situation. And again, I thank our volunteers that, that sort of helped make the situation a little bit better. And Ralph for answering his phone three times, because I
On behalf of the council, I will extend our appreciation to everyone, including yourself. And I'd also like to mention that it was greatly appreciated that you reached out and kept me informed at all times what was happening, what was going on. Because as you know, occasionally something happens, we get phone calls. And when we're left in the dark, it's like, ah. So for keeping me appraised and didn't mind answering the phone at all. So thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you. I guess I'll finish with our upcoming events, everybody's favorite time of year in Easton Meadow, 4th of July. The carnival 30th starts June 30th through the 4th. I can't remember, did they do it the 4th last year?
Yes.
Okay, just there's like a four-hour window after the parade. 12 to 4 or something. Okay. Kaku, the town manager here, July 2nd, 10:30. The fireworks, obviously the night of the 3rd at the high school. We'll see where they're at next year, but this year they're at the high school. And then the parade, obviously, the 4th at 10. And that's, that's it for tonight. I'll try to, try to get some of that into my report, the, this piece that was left off, so that when it gets posted, that, that piece of it's in there, sort of the update of. Thanks.
So at this time, I would ask the board's thoughts on waiving the 45-day period for the reappointments of the four officials. Wouldn't someone like to make a motion to waive the 45-day period?
I don't want to make the motion, but I'm thinking when the motion's made, maybe state the names of the appointees and boards, just for the record, for the motions.
I'm just making it more
Go ahead, Connor.
I move to waive the council's remaining veto period for the appointments of Reston for the Planning Board, Dr. Catherine Jobins for Board of Health, Marilyn Gudini for Board of Assessors, and Nancy O'Connor for the Board of Libraries Trustees.
Having a motion made in seconded, any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Duly authorized to be reappointed.
Deb, thanks you too. We like when we get that paperwork out.
It's rolling into our
Yeah, right into your
Okay, communications, correspondence, and announcements. So I'm not sure how many members have received it, but a citizen had sent in some correspondence. It was a citizen who lives on Pleasant Street with regards to some traffic issues and concerns. I didn't bring it up at the last meeting because I wanted to confirm, but I went back through my emails and our police department has been working with her and the situation to take a look at it and see what can be done. Tom, did you have any other input?
No, not, I mean, not at this time. I know that there, that, that
Well, I just want to make sure people understand that when we get correspondence, it may not be the, the council itself that responds, but we make sure that the correct location is, is given to the email and that someone responds appropriately.
We get a lot of complaints about speed and, and dangerousness of Pleasant, which is why the sidewalks going in in summer. I think they got bumped off a little, but that should be started shortly into the new fiscal year. So that was one of the reasons why that, that street was picked for, for sidewalk. It's, I mean, if you know, you, you've driven on Pleasant Street, it's not even safe to drive, let alone try to walk.
Very similar to Pea's Road.
Yes.
Do not walk on
Do not walk on
Okay, number seven is public hearings. We have none. Number eight, Orders of the Day, Licensing Matters. Do we have a motion for the approval of a liquor license for brew practitioners?
We do. I move to approve a one-day liquor license for brew practitioners for a festival at the Masonic Temple, 43 Chestnut Street, on June 29th, 2024, from 10:00 AM.
I will second that.
Having a motion made in seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight B, Financial Matters. Is there a motion to approve $49,000 transfer from IT non-salary line to salary line items?
Sure. I move to approve $49,000 transfer from information technology non-salary line items to salary line items as following. The organization code, transfer from 011552 until we get to the others, to the object code 5241 for the account name Repairs Vehicles, the amount of $1,712.38. An object code 5243, Repairs Telephones, $3,000. 5248, Repairs Computer Equipment, $10,000. 5310, Professional Tech Software, $24,287.62. 5341, Communication Telephones, $1,000. 5343, Communication Wireless, $5,000, total $49,000. Those transferring to organization code 011551 to object code 5113, Department Head Salary, $5,375.19. 5110, Full-Time Salary, $37,111.21. 5120, Temporary Position, $6,513.60, for a total of $49,000.
Second.
Thank you, Emma. Okay, we have a motion made in seconded, further discussion. I have further discussion before, before everyone jumps in. And I would like to ask the town manager for an explanation. $49,000 is a lot of money to be off on a salary budget one week from the end of the year. I've got a couple of concerns. I think for an amount this much, easily, we should have been notified after the third quarter. I know Kim has been pulling reports quarterly. I know we received some. I know we've asked, how does everything look? And we've been told, everything looks good, everything's in order. And to come up $49,000 short. Man, that, that, that's very difficult, especially on salary, because I'm assuming these people have continued to be paid, which means that that account's probably in the red right now. So I'm gonna turn it over real quick, just so that we can have an explanation on it.
So, yes, so the amounts are, obviously, the department head. Ryan was, was given a bump for the fiber project for additional duties. The regrade amount, or excuse me, the 37,000 amount was twofold. There were three positions that got regraded following the signing of the contracts for the UPSI. Because we had an employee that was outside of the union that because of the negotiations got accreted into the union and sort of the playing field needed to be leveled based on that person's salary. But about $20,000 of that $37,000, it was just an honest mistake. It was not budgeted correctly. So the number for 5110 was off when we started last year. And yes, this process itself has been switched. So this can't happen anymore. We've combined this new transfer form with our new Personnel Action Form, the PAF Form, which requires any step raise, any sort of action form for any personnel involving pay. There's more, they've added, Kim has added more boxes to check, so to speak, as in, has this been budgeted? Does it require a transfer? Does that need town manager's signature or does that need, right? So you can't even
That out. And who fills out PAF?
Whoever is making the change. So the department head, in this case, for their employee. Or, or me for a department head. And so if the money's not budgeted, either it gets transferred from the transfer or we have to move money from non-salary to salary, which would come to. So point being, the, the, the department head and the temporary one happens earlier in the year, like in July. So it's not like I, I didn't know about it. I did. But I was not aware that we were off this far from the original budget number. And again, the IT budget is not even close to over. That's why there's enough money to transfer into that account. So there was a mistake made on the original budget number as well as personnel changes that should have been documented all year that weren't. And that's, I'll eat that one.
Questions, Kathy?
So following what you just explained, I want to just touch base on the rationale that it was part of the backup material, which, again, explain that, but you'll see where I'm going with this. Kim describes it as, this is a combination of an insufficient beginning budget estimate for salaries in the department, regrades for Ryan's staff, and a mid-increase for him as well. And then she explains that new PAF. Having said that, and, you know, we're at the point where we're, we're in the 11th hour and we have to financially can't end, end the fiscal year in the red, especially when there's reserves in other line items. So at this point, we don't have the luxury of doing anything, I imagine, but approving it. But I want to go back to the Financial Oversight Committee process that I sat on with, with John and Ralph as executive, and of course, you were there. And it was one of the more
Pleasant.
Yes, besides Pleasant, I'm looking for, we had so much constructive information that it made our, the whole process easy to get through. But here's my conundrum. When we look at the budget, proposed budget for IT for next year, it comes in at $1,489,603, an increase of 21.92%. But the details say colas for at 2.5%, which I'm certain is a bargain for issue. Steps, non-union merit, $124,000 for the three-year antivirus, understandable, Microsoft Office, a Microsoft license and Open Gov license. Training, 5K phones, stipends. All software has been moved to IT, reducing by 30. This is in that very finite thing that I'm struggling even with cheaters on. But then it says, add $25,833 for salary regrades, add $2,765 in stipends. So that all made sense to us in April when we approved it. But this definition tonight says salary regrades, stipends, increases. I don't think you can have it both ways. I'm confused now. I hear you say there was an innocent under-budgeting for the salary items. I also hear you say there is this a whole bunch of money in other accounts that gave you the freedom to transfer, which gives me more concern than I had when I walked in here tonight, that, that $1,489,603 is as accurate as we assumed it was. And I would like to propose that in the new fiscal year, we pull together the folks that sat on that committee who are available and we review that budget because I'm the explanation resides in two places. How can there be a second year of salary regrades if you just went through it in this fiscal year?
Well, that's a good question.
Okay. And so I'm not here to battle it tonight. I'm just saying, I think that number now, I don't have confidence in.
Okay.
And I would like to say during the summer that at least John and And I would like to say during the summer that at least John and Ralph and myself. Um, sit with you at some point and just.
Sure.
Go through those numbers to make sure that it's as close as possible, especially so that we don't, um. Underestimate the salary impact. And if all these other line items in salary are, um. I don't, I don't.
So.
Solvent.
Yep.
So much so that he'll be turning back money.
Mm-hmm.
Then maybe those are over. Yeah, I just, I'm just.
So the, this.
About the whole thing.
Okay, so the salary budget, salary worksheet now resides in finance.
Okay.
For everyone. Across the board, all the contracts that were signed, all the ones that will get signed, everything is done. Through finance now so that, um, we don't, we don't have people doing different. Equations for different things, it just all runs through the salary worksheet for finance.
So I'm assuming that explanation was based on the regrades that had already occurred. And that we knew that obviously that the pay was going to be more. Based on, we've already done the regrades. And that was a salary item, just explaining why the salary had jumped up. But I would like to confirm that, and I do think it's a good idea to, um.
Just give it a.
Get together another quick.
Second opinion on it, just another look.
Yep, no, that's no, no problem there.
Marilyn.
Thank you, um, much of what my esteemed colleagues have said, so I'm not going to repeat it, esteemed, right? Stevie, anyway, um. My concern, um, addresses more specifically. Um, the communication between the town manager's office and the town council. You know, we're now being asked to make a decision about appropriation. You know, we, this is all a surprise, everything from, from Ryan's increase to the regrades, to. The, the deficit spending that was going on for a while. And clearly it's deficit spending because you don't have the money in the salary account until we transfer. And, and yes, it's, it's pretty simple to address what's being, um, asked of us this evening. The money's in the budget, just transfer it, but the impact is incredible. Because you're, you're funding more money into positions that. All, you know, for all intents and purposes are appropriate, but we don't know that. Because we didn't hear anything, so when you hear it in the eleventh hour, it does raise some feelings of suspicion. Truthfully, because why didn't we know this? I mean, it's quite simply, it's your decision as a town manager to be involved in these changes, however. We're going to be asked to appropriate them, and we didn't know anything about it. So I think that's one area where we have to concentrate on, I mean, that's my opinion. That, you know, there are months, there are not months, there are weeks that go by that we don't hear anything about anything, and. You assume that everything is going according to plan. But this is something that we probably should have at least had knowledge of, not that we were going to change it. But that's, that was a concern that I had. Um, in terms of the regrades, when did they, do you know when they took place?
Uh, well, I guess we signed the contracts, what, in September-ish, so yeah. It was before the first of the year, because after the first of the year, we changed all our process.
So a long time ago.
Yeah. Yep, and that's why I said, I'll, I'll eat that, because it was my decision and I put it forward and I, we, we knew. And again, uh. Always. Picturing that at, come the end of the year, we were going to square everything up. Um, so I apologize for not.
Well, and, and I'm not trying to scold anybody, it's just.
It's fine.
You know, when I read through the documentation and, and. You know, God bless Jeannie, she was looking to make sure she had all the information for the council, thinking that we might have some questions. And, and the response was, I would just have them approve the budget appropriation transfer as presented. Simple as that, and it doesn't work that way, because the buck stops here. So I got it off my chest, thanks for listening. I, you know, I'm not looking for, you know, to create any other issues, but. You know, these salary changes.
A mistake, yep.
So just out of curiosity, obviously you have a reserve fund in case, uh, items pop up, um. I guess it's a practical question, could the reserve fund have been used to fund this forty nine thousand dollars?
Uh, not at this time.
Well, I, because there's not enough money in, that's part of my.
No, no, of course, like from, from, as we look at this now, so somebody needs a re, regrade in August. That money in order to do, to even process the paperwork. Needs a transfer, because it wasn't budgeted for. And that either has to come from reserve or town council, and that can't get processed until you vote. So again, we've, we've, we've changed the process so that this won't happen again. Uh, I gotta take the licks for letting it happen in the first two quarters. And now it just can't, because our process doesn't allow it.
So my point was more, and again, I haven't spoken to any bookers. Um, but I would like to see that if something like this happens in a regrade. And a salary item needs additional money, that that be brought back to the council for it, instead of. Um, you just being able to do it out of the reserve fund.
Okay.
Um, and the reason being is more transparency.
Okay.
And like I said, I don't think any of us really has an issue. Um, especially based on your decision, whether someone wants a raise or needs a raise, or is appropriate to get one for us to fund it. I don't think there's ever been an issue with that, and I don't think there would be. Um, but again, it's nice to know, and I think in that situation, I think that would be a good idea. Again, I haven't talked to anyone, so that's my opinion.
Nope, that's, that's what we're trying to do, and again.
Yep.
Um.
I do like the new form, it makes a lot more sense, um, it makes sure that everything's bundled in and.
Right.
Um, like I said, I, you know what? There's areas that we've all known need a little bit of improvement, and I guess, I guess we just found one.
Well, yeah, and this was, yeah, again, this is my, uh. My mistake, the first part of this year to sort of make these decisions and not make them, uh, make you all aware.
One quick, one final comment.
Marilyn.
Just so that you know, um, where my thinking was going after I got past. How come we didn't know any of this stuff, I looked at the twenty five, roughly twenty five thousand dollars that was coming from a specific budget, and I'm thinking, whoa. You know, what budget is this and why does it have twenty five thousand dollars extra, until I looked at the budget. And saw how large the budget was, and so it made sense that. It's reasonable that twenty five thousand might still be sitting there, not, not used. So, you know, we were, not we, I was spinning my wheels, Jeannie, I called Jeannie, got some information, because I just wanted to understand. What kind of decision we were making tonight, so I hope this was all helpful, that's all.
Yeah, no, I, I think, uh, I, I appreciate it, everything's always helpful.
Right, so I just.
Kathy.
Curious question, as it relates to the contracts for department heads, are they on the same cycle, like? You review them all at pretty much the same time.
Will they be getting the same cycle now?
They are now.
Okay, so when you.
Same staking way.
So when you hire this new HR person.
Yep.
Let's say they start. I'm going to just say August fifteenth.
Yep.
That, will that be the contract date? For August fifteenth, or will you kind of prorate it so it goes July to July or whatever you have?
It would be August, because, but it would end in June.
Yep.
So that, uh, the policy would be.
Consistent, okay, you just have to get them into the cycles, because, got it, okay.
And similarly, or comparatively, like in April hire, the policy would read. You have to work a full year before you get to that July one merit. If.
Vacation time, blah, blah.
No, 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 uh, cola.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't get a cola in two, two months, basically. So we're, we're still tweaking the policy and.
Okay.
Um, with HR to figure out, but yes. July one is our favorite day, and we're trying to get everything in this.
Trying to get to July first. Um, Connor, John, Matt, any additional questions, thoughts, concerns?
Kind of hit the nail on the head with that, I think it would be a good idea to maybe open things up and. Take, so I'd be more than willing to, Kathy.
Yep.
Be a part of that.
Okay, we'll make that happen, so we've had a motion, uh, made, seconded, uh, definitely further discussion. Uh, hearing no, no additional further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Wait till the next one, no. Okay, um, moving on to financial matters B two. The approval of eight thousand, four hundred and thirty one dollar transfer, is there a motion?
Uh, I make a motion to approve an eight thousand, four hundred thirty one dollars. Transfer from zero, one, nine, one, four, two, five, three, one, O, health insurance, professional technical software. Two, zero, one, one, five, two, two, five, three, zero, eight, human resources, professional technology slash consultant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion. Um, this was just that, um, it was paid out of the wrong account.
Correct.
Bring it back into that account, so, um.
Yeah, this was in.
No shortfall or anything, it just.
No, but it also caught another mistake, which was we moved every single software line item to IT.
Before.
Except for the one in, in the health insurance, so now we realize and we'll get that out of there too. Gosh darn it.
I'm moving towards.
Uh, any other discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Okay, moving on, approval of minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes for June eleventh?
I make a motion to approve the June eleventh, twenty twenty four, open session.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And one abstention. Okay, um, to the next up is eight D, old business, town manager performance evaluation. Okay, so it's that time of year. July first is always a great time, um, end of June is always a difficult time. Um, evaluations are, um, to be done in open session per mass general law. Um, job performance needs to be done in open session. So with that being said, um, I circulated to each counselor. A performance evaluation, uh, worksheet, so that it would help us go through the evaluation. I would like to read in, uh, for the record, the categories that we are using to, um. To look at our town manager's performance. Uh, number one is, uh, individual characteristics. Number two is professional skills and status. Number three is relations with elected members of the governing body. Number four is a policy execution. Uh, number five is reporting. Number six is citizens' relations. Number seven is staffing. Uh, number eight is supervision. Uh, number nine is fiscal management. And number ten is community. Um, and then there's a space at the back for any additional comments. So I've asked each counselor to grade on a scale of one to ten each category. Um, I would like to point a performance evaluation committee. Um, I would ask that the council, uh, allow myself, Kathy Hill, and if Connor O'Shea would. Uh, be on it to analyze evaluations, come up with a grade, look at the contract and make a recommendation. Going forwards for salary. Um. If everyone is okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, so we have our, um, subcommittee, which will get together. Um, so with that, I would like to do a little bit of evaluation here, um. It's hard to think back over the entire year, because in one hand, it seems like it, you just started yesterday.
Yeah.
Um, every time I go into your office, it feels like the first time I've seen you sitting in there, um, the year went by extremely fast. Um, a lot of good things happened this year, and, um. I'd just like to touch on a few of them, um. I mean, I'd like to start with, uh, the goals that we had set for you. And the fact that you have been either working to achieve them or have achieved them. Um, I mean, three eighty two North Main Street, uh, we're moving along into the final phases of it. Uh, that's a project that had been ongoing for twenty five years, basically. Um, the municipal light plant, um, having a contract signed. And moving forwards with looking at the high-speed internet, again, um, major accomplishments. Um, I like the fact that you analyzed Heritage Park, um, that was high on the agenda to be done. And, um, like you said to us, it, it doesn't make sense to start that project. When we're about to start a major construction project right in front of it. And there's no way for the trucks to be in Heritage Park, the trucks to be in the road, um. I mean, it, it's hard to put something on hold. But you analyzed the situation and came up with what I think is the right decision. Um, and it says a lot, and, uh, this goes for all the residents out there that wonder why we put a road in and dig it up a week later. Um, in this situation, that's not going to happen, um, which is fantastic. Um. I like the fact that, um, as far as within the town, um, as I talk to the employees. Um, the morale is excellent, um. And you've kept it that way, I mean, I think with the past town manager, Mary McNally, uh, she helped increase the morale in town. And you've just kept it going, um, I have not heard, uh, any negatives going through town. Um, and again, I talked to a lot of people and you know that, um, which is, which says a lot for you and your character and. Um, that is something that, uh, I do take into account. Um, but with that being said, I've got a couple of areas of concern. Um, I know for one, my time management is absolutely horrible. And although I've seen you get a lot better with your time management, I think there's still some areas of improvement. Uh, that could be done, um. Things that start to concern me is when we approve money for, whether it be capital projects, um, through the CPC. And then there's a lengthy delay before anything even gets started, um. I think part of that's municipal government. But part of it is, whoo, we got through the hard part, we got the money. Okay, when I get a chance, I'll get to it, um, and I would just like to see some of that. Um, and one of the things I'm talking about, which I've already talked to you about, um, the brown farm under CPC, um. Well, as of now, I don't know, because it's been two days or three since I've talked to you, but there was no RFPs or anything created to even look at. Uh, the cost of the demoing, um, that was something I want to say back in January, that the funding was approved. Um, so again, the, that's one of the areas that I think, uh, improvements needed, um. We, I also asked, um, for a capital plan. To be at least started or thought about in regards to municipal buildings. Um, and I think the council as a whole would like direction as far as. You know, we feel comfortable the town hall's taken care of, we know that there's issues. Whether it be fire department, police department, uh, DPW facilities, uh, other schools. And we'd like some guidance as far as, you know, grouping that together and moving it forward so that. So that as a council, we can actually start looking and planning, um. I mean, those were a few issues, I'm going to open it up to my fellow counselors, Marilyn, um.
Just a quick comment, um. When the charter was created, when we were going through our government change. I read over more than once the responsibilities of the town manager. Then we changed our bylaws and you, you go through the general bylaws and everything in there, most of it comes to you. And I, I often felt, my goodness, this person has to walk on water. How can one person possibly, I mean this, that's what went through my head, what, how can one person possibly be responsible for all of this? The good news is it doesn't all happen at once, so that's, that's helpful. But, you know, I'm so impressed with who, what we have as department heads. You know, colleagues within the system that really function by themselves, they really, really do. And so, you know, maybe there's, the time management was the only thing that I was really focusing in on. And you, you admitted it yourself in yourself. And you would, you admitted it yourself in yourself about. And I think it's just trying to be all things to all people. And you're good at that. Uh, you know, so I'm just, you know, I'm, this isn't a lecture, it's just, it. You know, I accept what you're, I I know what you're dealing with. It's very hard. And you know, maybe there's a way somehow, some way to, you know, share the, share the load with someone else perhaps. Um, you know, if something's really egregious, you know, maybe somehow we can help you in some way. But um, I recognized a long time ago that that's, it's it's difficult to me. To cross all the Ts and dabble the Is. So that's all I have to say. Um, as um, an aside on on time management. Um, I think it's also um, a process that you grow into. You know, until you're overwhelmed with ninety-five things that need to be addressed in in this week, let's say. And figure out, okay, it forces you to prioritize on the fly. And then sometimes you get into a situation where what you thought was a priority. You were able to quick get it done and in the meantime, something else is percolating and becomes, it bumps two other things off your priority list. Uh, having been in that situation in a, you know, a management situation like that. Um, I do think it, and you can't. Get better at it until you see where you're struggling with it. You know what I'm saying? You have to like, go through the fire first and then be reflective and the fact that. You've already pointed that out to me is uh, speaks for itself. You write well. I like to think that your middle school English teacher has something to do with that.
Oh.
For you as a teacher. Uh, that's scary. You um, present well and you write very well, which is important because um. Besides um, a report such as your reports to us, um, people, people. When they read things, pick up on that if if an individual doesn't quite have a real capacity with the written word. It it comes out and we've all seen it. I mean, you can see it just in um, pick up a a newspaper and. You can tell um, a reporter who really has a capacity with the written word and others who. It's manageable and it's okay, but you 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 excel in in that regard.
Connor?
Sure, I have a few. Um. Overall, I think Tom is a wonderful town manager and has been a good asset to the town. I think his commitment to his hometown shows in the amount of effort and thought that he puts into the work on a daily basis. Um, coupled with a whole bunch of other team members, of course, but I think this year's budget process. Was our best attempt yet as a town, which was definitely exciting. And I'm also excited that moving forward, we're starting to do some more forecasting, which should help. Make some of these decisions easier and more timely. Similarly, the one thing that I picked up on was time management. Um, definitely a few things that kind of come in at the last possible second, but I think you recognize that. And I think now that you're building up your own bench of people around you, delegation will become easier over the next year. But definitely overall, there's been a lot of projects in flight and even more to come. But I think you're well suited to continue and stay on top of all of them. And again, you've curated a good team around you and I'm looking forward to see what we hold in store for the next year. Thank you.
John? Hey, when I was thinking about this, I felt like there was one word that kind of described, I think, the last year well was if I felt like stability. You know, like I, this has been my first year in the town council, so I've been able to see kind of a lot more, be involved a lot more, even more than. Being on planning and whatnot, and I felt like things were generally quite stable in our town government. It felt like things were getting more streamlined. Um, I thought, you know, we have somebody that can communicate well both to us. Would probably have no problem talking to any of us one-on-one, has good relationships with all of, I mean, we have dozens of folks on different boards. Um, the morale seems to be increasing and then also the component of engaging with the citizens and. You know, we have a lot of citizens that are here for coffee with the town manager. I've not had the pleasure yet to stop in, but um, I know they're quite popular. Um, so I think that's really important because you not only have. Good morale at the town hall level, but having good morale in the community when people know that things are moving, the trains are running on time. And things are happening. So I think that was uh, the word that I kind of kept um, coming back to when looking at a lot of these. Um, different um, areas to rate. Um, I will just echo, I think I I saw the time management as well, and I think the one kind of going to um. In in that consideration, you know, the concern of I I I'm a bad, terrible time manager. I'm probably the worst one in this room and the, I've always found like if if it gets too bad. You know, then things kind of can spiral really quickly because like in this area of um, you know. Disasters or unexpected things can really happen, whether that's natural, like what we saw a few days ago, or it could be something else. Um, so if you're not been doing well, maybe with that time management in the last, in weeks leading up to that. And then everything sort of all happened on, it risks, um, you know, disaster of some sorts. So, but I think overall, I think that was kind of my um, the the word I kept coming back to that I think best simulates here, I think things were. Stable, there was a lot that happened. It didn't feel like it because it did feel like it went by really fast. Um, but you know, getting uh, the vote on the new high school, getting uh, a new town hall streamlined. I love the word streamlining, um, because everybody should be kind of operating in that type of way. So I look forward to um, you know, where we need to go as a community with public safety or with some of our other schools or things. Um, and hopefully those will get developed more um, in the next year.
Matt, any uh, added?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I just sort of like kind of echo everybody's comments and uh. I uh, suppose, you know, I kind of expect this year to be sort of like a learning. Year for you, Tom, because like, you know, I. To step into a role like town manager, like I professionally in a warehouse, I manage about a hundred people a day just packing boxes. And I know how much you can just get people coming up to you about like. Can't tie their shoes or whatever's going on. I'm sure, so you come in, you have this overarching plan we give you. And then I'm sure we we only know half of what's actually happening between the citizen, you know, residents, employees, all of that. Um, so I sort of expected just taking sort of the helm of an organization that large, I expected there to be a bit of a. Learning curve along with the size of the municipal municipal budgets in general. Um, I thought the budget process was super.
Really well.
Smooth compared to, you know, I was in the financial oversight committee the year before and it was a little bit, a little bit bumpier, not that, you know, but uh. Um, other than that, I mean, my main sort of, I guess, criticism um. Would be, and I, you know, I never, the time management occurred to me for half a second. I was like, I I not even gonna, I don't, I don't know how his daily workflow goes. I don't know, I can't, you know, judge. I'm just those uh, TM reports coming in a little, you know, before the meeting, I'd be the same. Uh, would be just kind of like more regular communication with you and the council between. Meetings and not like, like, oh, someone texts you and you like, you'll respond. I have no doubt about that, but just like more regular updates. And that might be like a function of only meeting once a month as opposed to twice a month, but um, that would be kind of my main. I guess quibbler like just, you know, going forward, if something happens, just like a email, just an email update, not even like a phone call, but. Yeah, otherwise I think, you know, I think you've done a really good job and you'll. You're a good town manager, so, great town manager.
Shit.
Okay, so with that, I'm just gonna make a couple closing comments and I'm gonna echo what Matt said. Um, being that this is the first time, first year of being a town manager. Um, I think overall you've done a fantastic job. And I just want to reiterate that, even though um, it sounds like, hey, here's all these, you know. Negatives coming out of my mouth. Um, I look at it as a whole and being on. Uh, both the charter, uh, original committee and the review committee, I realize. How much we put on the town manager. And I mean, it was everything. I pretty much, hey, just give it to the town manager, let them figure it out and. And I do realize that and I know how difficult it is. And uh, you've done a fantastic job and I just, I can't say that enough. Like I said, I'm uh, I'm very happy. Um, and one other thing that I've noticed, um, the subcommittees. Um, I just want to give some kudos. I know you took that as a priority to try over the year. To get to at least one or a couple of, whether it be the planning board or um.
Bylaw.
Yeah, all all the different subcommittees. And even if you weren't there the whole meeting, you stepped in, how you doing? Is there anything going on? What's happening? Um, and that was huge. Um, I mean, I had been on some subcommittees for years and. Never seen a town manager and before that, the board of selectmen wouldn't. I mean, you never saw them unless you went to their meeting, so. So to read out, to reach out to the different committees was was wonderful and uh, I I think that just needs a little bit of uh, extra on it and. Um, with that being said, is there anything else anyone would like to add? Um, if not, then if we have all the evaluations, I'll collect those for the end of the meeting. Or you can get it to me.
Electronically.
Streamlined.
So do I have a choice? Okay, so yes, you can. Um, and then what I'll do is I'll reach out to the committee members and see what's available and uh, and we'll go through them. And this is not an easy process and I think you're aware of that and uh. It's not easy for you, it's not easy for us, so.
No, I'm I'm aware and and again, I think all of this, and I'm taking notes because. I know it was my first year and there were things that I could have done better and I want to do better. And so I'm gonna, as I'm looking through all the things on this list. Well, I'll be taking notes of that too. And I did, one did make me laugh, the uh, mental and physical stamina appropriate for the position. Some days.
Don't have.
Yes, and some days no. Uh, but no, I I agree it uh, I know it's difficult. Uh, but again, uh, not that you're not going to, but. As honest as possible because it's only gonna make me better, so appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, on to our next item, number E, new business. We have a proposed amendment to the traffic rules and regulations, adding no parking on both sides of Melwood Ave from Maple Street to Savoy. Um, I will uh, I will make this motion because there needs to be a small adjustment to what's written. Um, I make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to traffic rules and regulations, adding no parking on both sides of Melwood Ave. From Maple Street to Savoy Ave, um, six to eight AM and one to three PM. And also to um, change the map, which is exhibit.
A.
Exhibit A um, to correspond with this change. Yes, well, it says there's a map somewhere.
I'm looking.
It's in the basement.
Having a motion, someone that would like to second it, Connor.
Oh, second for discussion.
Seconded for discussion. And would you like to start the discussion?
Sure, I have two things. Um, one, uh, I guess the post order procedural. I was a little confused because even though it's traffic rules and regulations, it's listed under our bylaws under chapter five eighty. So does that not need to be? Public hearing because we're making a bylaw change?
So, if I may. That, uh, division two, rules and regs is not part of the division one bylaws anymore. And that's like a, like a category thing over here. Um, as far as, as far as I understand. Um, so so the division one is bylaws. And then there are all of our bylaws are listed under their general and zoning. Including the fee schedule you just created. And then division two is rules and regs, which are not bylaws that do not require the bylaw process. As I understand it, and I could be off, but um.
So they just follow like the same numbering scheme, but they're not actually.
Well, to go further, the council rules are under there, so. I think that's the defined line of that division two.
So that's how I unders, that's how I understood the way E code separated it all out was that the bylaws were division one and everything else was in division two.
And that's the way it was meant. Um, the traffic rules and regs were meant to be the same as, you know, the council rules and regs that would not require a public hearing for it. Um, to my knowledge, they've never required a public hearing to adjust the traffic rules and regs. Um, they usually require um, a recommendation from the police department. And I'm assuming we have a recommendation from the police department.
For this change?
Not necessarily. Um, this is more of a uh.
This was a planning book, it wasn't it?
So uh, let me, let me just, well, I'll back it up because I did end up talking to.
Discussion, Tom?
Other discussion, yeah, so I did, I did talk to Mark. Um, and I did talk to Officer Healy, who's the school resource officer who's always at the high school. And um, I believe Lieutenant Manning as well. This this issue was brought up for during the site plan approval of the new high school. And I don't think it's as much of a problem in the morning, although I added the morning hours uh, for discussion. Uh, but right around time, like like one to one school get out one fifty-ish, somewhere in there. Everybody parks uh, on Melwood up to and including the radius onto Maple Street. On both sides because if you get in the horseshoe, you cannot go left on Maple Street at one fifty. Impossible, so people stay on the other side so that they can just pull out and go right towards Long Meadow. Um, so it was brought up, um, I think. One of the, one of the planning board members brought it up uh, as a condition of approval, which I think as we've talked about before, that's not really in their milieu. Uh, and I I want to say. I don't remember who it was, doesn't matter. Um, but it brought up an interesting point because. The 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 whole layout is now changed. So the 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 new entrance to the high school will be directly across from Melwood. And yes, they've tried to change the traffic pattern and in theory. Like we all love so much, it looks like it's gonna work well and people will be able to get out. The difference is going to be that that traffic light is not going to be there anymore. So if you get out of your car and press the button and wait for the green light, then you can go left, but people do that. That light is gone and it's going to the rapid flash beacon, so there's not gonna be anything. For traffic to aid traffic trying to take a left there. Um, so I think the traffic's gonna get worse. And during construction in particular, it's gonna get, I I don't know where people are gonna park, but if they find that. During this phasing that there's nowhere to park, they're, that's the first place they're gonna go is to park on Melwood and just leave their car and. You know, you can park on streets in East Long Meadow wherever you want, as long as it doesn't say no park. Um, so there was some, there was some thought, um, and I have to have further conversations with with the the fire department, but. There was some thought that with those cars there would be very difficult for a for a fire engine to make that turn. Um, so I mean, at the very least, parking, even if it's allowed, shouldn't be anywhere near the intersection of a street. Right? We don't, DPW doesn't allow driveways to dump out near an intersection. You can't park, if you're parking at an intersection, typically you're parked at a stop sign. Which you can't do because then everybody else has to go around you. So I think at minimum, we should, we should probably look at. You know, even if it's a few hundred feet away from Maple, we shouldn't allow people. Uh, I mean, sight distance, we, you could go on and on with the dangers of parking at the corner of a street. Especially a main road like Maple Street, but I I I have a feeling that not just to satisfy the planning board's recommendation. Um, if it was that uh, for no parking there, I think there's gonna be uh. The 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 situation is going to arise from all the new parking. Especially during construction, uh, the new traffic patterns, uh, I think, I think the problems are only gonna get worse, but. Uh, when I talked to chief today, you know, it wasn't anything that anybody was like, it was a, you know, super glaring concern. So I think maybe we uh, we kind of keep an eye on it. Um, and I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I, I mean, I think it's a good practice not to let anybody park anywhere near an intersection, a hundred feet at least. Um, so that you can get around that vehicle and then get back in your lane. Before somebody else comes flying around the corner taking a left while you're. before somebody else comes flying around the corner taking a left while you're, you're outside of your lane. Um, so that, that's why it's on here. Uh, we don't need, we don't need to make a decision by any means tonight. We can have a further conversation. I can have um, you know, police and the school resource officer and the school and the police, the safety officer here too, um, to chat about it. I just wanted to bring it up. I didn't, my, my, my other part-time job is making sure nothing stops the schedule here of the new high school. Uh, we already are aggressive. Uh, it already uh, is a, a very expensive project. And now time is money and we, the town of East Long Meadow shouldn't be putting ourselves in a position to stop the process in any way, shape or form. So this was mostly just to have a conversation to see if this is something that um, that warrants the further look, for sure.
Anything further, John?
Um, I actually think that's a pretty good idea, quite frankly. I don't know if we should do six to eight AM, because I don't know if it actually builds up that much from what I remember. Um, but I think it makes perfect sense because I think it comes down to not only um, safety, but a quality of life issue for the residents that live there. And I think it's um, a perfectly reasonable thing that folks can accommodate. I mean, we have buses, we have other uh, transportation options that students can take. Um, so not everyone necessarily needs to be perhaps picked up individually. Um, especially with all this kind of commotion that's going on. So I I'd be inclined to support it tonight, but if the rest of my colleagues.
I'm inclined to support it tonight as well. Um, I would also say that um, it's going to be a learning curve. Uh, when that first bell rings in late August, uh, for everybody. And um, in school administration, as well as the site managers for construction will absolutely have their hands full the first few, probably the first month until you people are retrained, if you will. So what I would like to see is that there's an additional presence of police there to, they're gonna need to, to just aid in the, the traffic flow. But to, you know, it's a learning curve, even if they, they're on foot and they say to folks, you can't do this anymore. Because I don't, as much as people, a new school is coming and they can see the beginning stages of it, they don't realize yet that the, the new entrance is gonna line up exactly with the mouth of Melwood. And it could change a couple of times between here and opening day as construction needs to move around a little bit. And, you know, that beautiful front lawn with all the nice trees unfortunately had to be sacrificed because that's going to be the temporary holding pattern for uh, parking for staff. Um, while we, while things go, but toward the end, that'll shift as well. So I, if, if there was a, uh, a sentiment that I would like Chief Williams to be aware of is that, you know, earmark that in the back of your mind that it, I wouldn't leave it up to the safety. The uh, school resource officer, he's gonna have his hands full on.
Yeah, that's true.
With um, just helping administration to, because the kids who drive cars are gonna be in that same predicament, oh, where am I gonna put my car? Um, that I think additional um, patrol has to happen for the first sixty days until things settle down.
So I just want to point out real quick that under this section, under the traffic rules and regs, what we're changing, uh, it clearly states that this section does not apply to a vehicle during the time that the person who is uh, using the vehicle is rendering a service to a household or business establishment, or during the time that the vehicle is being used for pickup or delivery to a household. So like an Amazon truck stopping, FedEx trucks. Yeah, they're not in a no parking zone where they're gonna get ticketed. Same with a landscaper, an electrician, something on that idea. This is someone that pulls up and parks on the side of the road, has no business at the house or whatever, but more than likely is waiting for, or dropping someone off of, for over at the high school. Uh, so there are preventative measures there so that, you know, the landscaper's not being ticketed because he's working at someone's house.
Yep. No, and I think, sorry. And then that's sort of why the, the time thing went in there, because I, you know, people have parties and family over and if you park in the street, we don't want people getting ticketed on a Saturday afternoon at, right, four in the afternoon, like, you can park on the street like on, from Savoy to Maple, just not, not during this time when everybody's trying to get out of the school, right?
And I'm assuming if this is passed, that signage would be uh, posted and not just by a ticket.
I would have, I don't even, I actually. I, I, I don't regulate, regulatorily speaking, I don't think you can ticket if it's not posted.
Correct, yeah.
Connor.
Um, overall, I'm not opposed to the idea. The only thing I would suggest is that we get the input of the people that actually live on that street so that we don't end up in a situation like the council did a couple of years ago with rural lane. And that kind of exploded and backfired. Because so far, we're just taking the opinion of people that may have participated in the high school process with their concerns, but not the people that actually lived there and have to deal with it.
Both from that area at the planning board site, where I know there was neighbors or sort of, but were there anybody, was there people from?
Not necessarily on Melwood, at least not uh, vocal enough where I remember it was us. It was Susan and uh, Lori, uh, the, everybody behind, the neighborhoods behind. Um, which coincidentally, all those streets are no parking anytime. Um, you know, because everybody just parks there and walks into the school when they're, when they're, when there's a game in the back, right? They would just park on the side of the road and, and run in. And I think at some point, the neighborhood was like, what? Why isn't a parking lot over here? Uh, those dead end streets and you run up the hill and there's the soccer field, right? So, um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I think there, 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 another conversation or two is probably prudent. Um, and I don't know that we have to rush since school's not starting until late August.
So how do we get people that live there's opinion on it?
Well, I think I could probably.
A letter that says, hey, let us know what you think.
Yeah, well, I think I can, we can probably go back through the minutes in the video and find out what the actual conversation was during the planning meeting, you know what I mean? Um, just to remember the exact comment and, and what everybody, if anybody weighed in. Um, like I said, I only, I really only remember um, the residents um, to the rear, but um.
But I think we could probably easily through the assessor's office find out now that houses there or whatever, and whether it be the town council sending a letter saying, uh, we're considering doing no parking between these hours.
Yep.
We'd like to know your concerns you have until
Yeah.
six PM tonight.
I think at minimum, the, you know, no parking here to corner sign has to be there at some point, no matter what. Uh, we, you can't, you can't park at a stop sign, you just can't. Um, so, um, again, wheels in motion, uh, I think I can try to grab some more information and then um, maybe the meeting in July, we, we have another quick conversation about it.
That works for me.
So we've had a motion already made and seconded and we're in further discussion. Um, so I would accept um, a motion to table this until our July meeting.
I'd move to table the matter until our July meeting.
Second.
A motion made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? I think in practice, it sounds like a good idea, but I think that's wonderful to actually reach out to the residents to say, hey, I know you live there.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts and concerns on this?
Yeah, no parking here to corner, and then everybody parks in front of everyone's driveway on the, right? I mean, that's how it's gonna go. No, that's a good suggestion.
Um, action items and um, going forwards for the next. Um, so the next meeting will take place in July. It will be the first meeting of the new fiscal year, which is a reorganization meeting. Um, under our rules, basically, um, myself as president and Maryland being uh, two years, um, are not eligible without a super majority vote, but what I'd like is um, anyone that's interested to think about it, consider it. And at our July meeting, we will have the reorganization. Uh, and like I said, we will follow our uh, rules and regulations with regards to appointing the next president and vice president. Um, other action items, um.
Public hearing? For the fee schedule?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, um, so the fee schedule will be on, so you don't have to read it, Matt. We will be holding a uh, public hearing for the fee schedule on that. Um, we also have a, a couple agenda items that are already popping up uh, with regards to the ground mounted solar uh, bylaw, a couple additional changes. Um, and, and we also have to uh, consider setting goals for the town manager for year two.
Right.
Um, so that would be something I would ask everyone to start thinking about. Um, write down a couple of goals, a couple of thoughts, and I think that should be on our next meeting to start at least a general process of discussion of them. Um, did I miss anything?
There will be a few motions um, to close out twenty-four. We have to do all that by the fifteenth, so.
Okay.
And we'll have that all together. She's already started. Once the numbers become final.
That would be to pay prior year bills and stuff.
No, for like transfer, transfer and um, those all out.
So that.
Yeah, but, but I just assume that as of June thirtieth, fiscal year is closed. No matter where you're at. And then you have to. Okay.
Yeah, there'll be some, some, just some.
Adjustments.
Yeah.
Housekeeping.
Yeah, that's all.
Any other thoughts? With that, once again, Connor, congratulations on reelection. Uh, Jim, congratulations. And Matt, thank you so much. Um, but please understand that uh, you will be asked to be on some committees. So don't go too far. Is there anything else? Anyone wants to include? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You're adjourned.